Welcome, everyone. Today it's 6:00 PM and we're going to do the study session on fiscal year 2021 audit report presented by Plant Moran.
Martin Olajnne for Plant Moran, I think you're going to be starting first, is that right?
Yes.
Well, thank you for having us once again this year. We are going to present the financial statement audit for this year for the June 30, 21 audit. With me is Molly Brugelmann, who was the senior or I would say the first one that probably lifted the most weight during the audit. Nikki Ajo with the manager and then myself. So I would say I probably did the least amount of work, I feel like. But like I said, a very big lift, I would say by the Plant Moran team, but I would say extreme kudos to the city. It was a huge lift, given all the changes that you had throughout the year, personnel changes, change in, you know, the mayor passing away during the year and new mayor coming in, Mayor Bazey, just everything. You had three controllers during the year, just all the changes and everything that were happening, I would say this was a huge lift. Probably the toughest audit I've seen in the city and given that we're presenting it on January 10th, I would say it was a huge monumental success for the whole city. So thank you for all the effort for everybody to step up and definitely help them. There are going to be a few documents that we're going to cover in front of you or kind of during the presentation. I'm going to briefly discuss the financial statements and the opinion letter. After that, Molly is going to cover the graphs, which is going to give you the highlights of the financial position for the city. And then Nikki is going to cover the post-audit letters, so any findings and anything that we had. So with that, I'm going to start. Normally, I wait until the end of the presentation for questions, but if you prefer to ask throughout, please let us know and we're happy to entertain any questions as they come up. So with that, the biggest or the thickest document that I was going to start with is the financial statements themselves for the June 30, 21 fiscal year. And specifically on page one and two is the opinion letter. So it is a clean opinion, what they call in accounting lingo is unmodified opinion. What that means is you can rely on the numbers that are presented to you. So all the numbers that are within the financial statements, you can rely on, whether you're the budget, and it's exactly what you should expect. Now, the key item that I do want to highlight on that is Nikki is going to cover some findings, just overall findings as a result of the audit. It doesn't mean that when you have a clean opinion, it doesn't mean that you don't have improvements to work on or things that we had found during the audit. What it means is after our testing was done, after adjustments were posted, you can rely on the numbers. So I did want to specify that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Molly to go over the graphs. I'm going to be in on white and navigate the presentation itself and that they could just give you one second.
Martin?
So this is the presentation, hopefully everybody can see it now.
Perfect.
And Molly, you're up.
All right, thank you, Martin. Can everyone hear me okay?
All.
Okay, awesome. All right, so as Martin mentioned, my name is Molly. And it's kind of first up on this first slide presented here demonstrates the overall six-year trend of corporate fund revenue. Revenue has remained relatively consistent year-over-year. It increased about 2.5 million from prior year, as you can see here. And then property taxes does make up the most significant portion of corporate fund revenue at about 55%. And overall taxable value is up due to inflation. It also shows here there's a breakout below and you can see that federal grants were up 700,000 and this primarily relates to COVID funding. Targets for services were down about 500,000 and license increments were up about 500,000. And this overall relates to the increase in additional fee amounts. Moving on to the next slide. So this slide helps illustrate the total taxable value and overall decline in taxable values that began around 2008, as noted here. Beginning 2013, you can see that the city started to see the taxable value slowly starting to increase. Overall, it will take some time for the city to get where a taxable value was before 2008. And moving on to the next slide. So this slide here is used to illustrate the overall trend of state churn revenue. State churn revenue payments make up the city's second largest source of revenue. As you can see, since 2014, state churn revenue has been increasing over the years with a slight decrease in fiscal year 2021 of about 300,000 from prior year. So this next slide shows a six-year trend of corporate fund expenditures. When reviewing this, in total, expenses increased approximately 2.9 million from prior year. Below again shows a more detailed breakout demonstrating that public safety increased about 1.2 million and general government increased about 2.5 million. Overall, this increase primarily relates to a number of items, including fringe benefits, insurance, COVID supplies, and pension and OPEB amounts. So this slide here outlines the corporate fund balance and ratio over the last eight years. When we look at the overall health of the fund, we often look at the unassigned and assigned fund balance as a guideline of what's truly available to spend as a ratio of annual expenditures. And this slide shows the past eight years of that ratio, which has been improving each year. 2020, we see is at 14.5% with a slight drop in fiscal year 2021 of 11.6%. We would also like to point out that this is not available cash. During the audit, the city also implemented a fund balance policy, which is also discussed in the post-audit letter.
I'm sorry, Molly, can you repeat the last statement or previous to the last statement? You mentioned something about cash, can you repeat that statement again, please?
Yeah, so we just wanted to point out that the fund balance is not available cash.
Right. Yeah, so it's like fund balance doesn't necessarily equal cash, basically. So it is going to be primarily cash, but there's other items that basically add and subtract from that. So essentially what it is, is assets minus some liabilities equal fund balance. So a lot of times when people look at fund balance, they assume that, okay, this is how much money we have to spend. It's not necessarily the case. It's not until you actually collect some of the receivables and different things to actually have cash available.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chair.
We got a question here, go ahead, Counselor.
And Martin or Molly, does this include the 25 million we received in the American Recovery Act money or?
It does not. So the recovery, the ARPA money that came in, there's about 12, like 2 million, 12.5 million, something like that, that came in before June 30, 21. So on the balance sheet in the financial statements, you'll see that included in the cash balance, but there is also unearned revenue as a liability. So it does not triple down to the fund balance amount because you're technically, you don't have that available money to spend on anything.
Right, and it's very restricted money, I guess you could say, just for infrastructure, the ARC money?
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Martin, you said that our fund balance decreased by $2 million, can you explain that by, or 2.5 million, can you explain that?
There was a decrease overall, so as Molly is presenting, I can take a look overall, but as I'm sharing this screen, let me, can you see the financial statements?
We only have one computer to look at here.
On the screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
Where we're at, we can't see specifically what you're referencing, just so that you know.
I'm going to scroll down, I apologize.
But not all of us can see.
Motion sickness. So overall, when Molly was talking about the fund balance decreasing, so it did decrease a little bit as a percentage of your expenditures, but the expenditures went up. So that's part of the reason why it showed as a percentage of your expenditures, the bigger decrease in overall. But the corporate fund in general, so you can see the total revenue for the year came in at about 51 million dollars and your total expenditures were a little bit higher by about 232,000. So your total fund balance, which Molly is going to cover in the next slide, is actually made up of more items than just that 5 point some million dollars that's unassigned. There are some other items that are in there. So your overall fund balance actually decreased only 232,000 from the year prior. So it started at 10.5 million, ended at 10.2 million. And Molly is going to cover the breakout of what's made up out of that 10.2.
Martin, my problem is, is I don't know all the other little bits that comprise that. That should be told to us, what they are.
Regarding to the 2.5?
If you could say that again, I apologize.
Can you point the page number, please?
You stated that there were other items in that 5 million dollars, but what are they? They should be itemized to tell us exactly what it all is.
So I'm going to go back to the slide that Molly has. So that 10.2 million of fund balance that I mentioned, it's made up of various components. 5.9 million is unassigned. So basically, you can spend it on anything the city and the city council would like to spend it on. Most of the time, those are items that are spent on payroll, items that you basically need money on to keep the city lights on and et cetera, operations working. The other items that are here, the restricted and non-spendable amounts, those are broken out in the financial statements as well in detail. A majority of that is made up of PEG fees, sanitation, things that you have to spend money on specific purpose. You can't just spend them on general payroll, utilities and things like that.
Well, is sanitation just rubbish pickup?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is sanitation only comprised of trash pickup? What are we counting as sanitation?
So let me show you that too on the statement. So it has nothing to do with water and sewer, I just want to.
Pardon me?
You know, it is a garbage pickup, it's sanitation overall.
So there's nothing else included in sanitation but the trash pickup?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't.
I just want to show on the, in the financial statements on page 12, it shows the detail in the corporate fund of what makes up that restricted amount. And it is everything here that shows. So you have PEG fees, smart money, sanitation levy, which is 1.7 million, X345 levy, and then a little bit of construction co-fee.
Well, here we go with the sanitation levy, what is that? Is that the trash pickup?
Yes, so the sanitation levy, so the property taxes are levy to the residents, it's only able to be used for sanitation costs. So you have to keep track of that and as the expenses come in every year, you offset that against the revenue. And this is the remaining balance right now, 1.7 million.
Okay.
And the city does keep track of it, so that way you're not spending above and beyond or using the money for other reasons.
I'm going to let you continue because I've got other questions and I'm looking through my notes here as you speak, so please bear with me as you go along. Thank you.
No problem. Molly, if you don't mind, one of the notes that I had here is on the assigned balance for 2021, it had been consistently at $2 million and then suddenly dropped to zero. Do you know why it dropped to zero for 2021 on page six to the right?
That $2 million was officially assigned by the council a few years back for starting to fund the OPEB plan. And during 2021, the council unassigned that balance and basically it becomes part of the unassigned amount. So you did start funding OPEB and therefore, you know, I assume that's the reason why you end up unassigning it, plus it can be utilized for any purpose by the city. So it's not restricting or anything like that, but assignments are purely done by the city government, so you can technically reposition or redeploy that money for something else. That's what the city did.
So Martin, does that, did that $2 million affect our bottom line? Is that how it went up, 2.5 or 2.8 million dollars?
No, so the assignment or unassignment, it just moves it from one category to the next in the fund balance on the balance sheet, it does not affect your bottom line. It affects your unassigned amount, so your unassigned amount that, so last year you had $5 million, almost even of unassigned fund balance, this year you have almost 6 million. If you had not unassigned that $2 million, you would be down to just under $4 million in your unassigned fund balance.
Thank you, Martin and Molly.
Any other questions on this slide?
If you could tell us what slide you're on or maybe what page?
On page six.
So we were just covering the slide six and Molly is going to go to slide seven now.
I'm sorry, before you move on.
You're off the hook on slide six, Molly.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Martin, before you move on to non-spendable, can you clarify that, please?
I'm sorry?
It says non-spendable.
Yeah, the non-spendable portion of what that relates to. And that relates to items that actually, to be honest, it's prepaid assets, so things that the city would have already spent money on, but it's technically not an expense until the following year. So if you prepaid healthcare premiums, some kind of insurance, utilities or anything like that, it's technically not the expense of the prior period because it's covering the next period. So it's recorded as an asset, but technically it's not cash. You're not going to be able to spend it on anything else, it becomes a non-spendable classification in the fund balance.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Molly. Martin or Molly, either one of you guys can continue, go ahead.
Can I say that again, I'm sorry?
You can go ahead and continue, we're all set for questions.
Sounds good. So Molly, we're off to the Water and Sewer Fund.
Yeah, okay. So this demonstrates the Water and Sewer Fund and looking at fiscal year 2021, we can see that operating income shows a little less than 8 million and capital outlay is about 9 million. Looking at this analysis over the long term from 2015 to 2021, we see that operating income shows a total of 30.1 million and overall total capital outlay and debt from 2015 to 2021 is at 33 million. So this slide really captures that cash paid is less than operating income over the years.
I've got some questions.
Go ahead, Counselor.
First of all, are water and sewage based on what we pay for for water or is it included with all the other payments that we have to do, CSO, improvements, blah, blah, you know, et cetera, et cetera? Okay, and does it include our capital investments? And my thing is, is why is that part of our water bill as far as what we pay for water?
So if I'm understanding the question correctly, so this is Water and Sewer Fund only, the operating income is the net after all your expenses are paid, it does not include depreciation because it's not a cash item, but it does include all the water and sewer rates that you've collected from the residents minus Water and Sewer payments to third parties, et cetera. So it's your overall operating income in comparison to capital outlay and debt. Capital outlay does include CSO, any capital improvements, water main breaks, emergency repairs, things like that.
Correct, but the.
So it does include all that, all those items and then the debt payments, which are clearly required to be made, so.
Correct, but the citizens don't know what they're paying for. They think they're paying for water and yet nothing is ever itemized to tell us how much the resident is paying for just the water, just the sewage, and then any capital improvements, any CSO and anything of that nature. Now, and bear with me, please, because this, this is a big document to go through in three days while it took your company and the city six or seven months to complete here and we're going through this for, in three days. Now, I did go seek some help and there's a few things that I'm missing here and I'd like to see if, is Mr. Jamal on the?
He is.
He is on there.
Could we get him to interject, please? Because I spoke with him at length on this because I really truly can't understand all of this and it's very hard to go through these numbers in three or four days. It's just, it's next to impossible. And there's a lot of other questions going on on how we pay for things and how things are done. We've got a household with five people in it, they're going to be charged more on their water bill for capital improvements and things of that nature than a household with two people because it's going on their water bill. And it's not fair, you know, someone pays.
I'm available, Counselor, ma'am.
So one comment, if I can interject real quick on Water and Sewer. The city, city management met with me on Monday of this week. We went over the draft Water and Sewer rate agreed upon procedures. Those procedures are going to be provided to the council in the coming days and the presentation is going to be in a couple of weeks. And those procedures in the reports that are in there itemize pretty much every single expense in the Water and Sewer Fund and it shows everything to the detail, including Water and Sewer breakout of revenues, expenses, how much each user pays, et cetera. So it provides a lot of detail, a lot more detail than GAAP financial statements provide. GAAP financial statements are clearly very much more summarized, so right now on the screen, I'm showing what the Water and Sewer Fund, I'm going to call it income statement, but it's a longer name for governmental entities, statement of revenue, expenses and changes in that position. But essentially, it shows the Water and Sewer service fees, various revenues, various expenses, but the breakout for the Water and Sewer, if you need more detail, it is very granular, granular in that agreed upon procedures report that we're going to be going over in two weeks.
Yeah, but in your report, you also called the, at one point, you called the sewer, the CSO of reserve funds and those really aren't reserve funds if the general person just looked at that and says, okay, we got reserve funds and a CSO, but those should have been called what they really are, is the over taxation cap, the captured over taxation of what that's, what they really were. And we're not being, we're not being honest with the people by not telling them what they really are. It's just transparency that I'm looking for.
Yeah, the CSO levy, so that's, that would not be on the income statement, that would be on the balance sheet, which is the previous page.
Correct.
And the CSO restriction is noted here, it's part of your fund balance, so it is a restricted amount.
But it's labeled wrong. It should be labeled of what it really is instead of a reserve, it was an over taxation.
It's called special levy because it was a special levy for the debt payments and those debt payments, and we'll cover that in a lot of detail next week for the Water and Sewer rate. That is going to be consumed with your first payment for the 2021 capital improvement balance.
And then, and to go back, to go back when we had our audit report about, our, shows a decrease in 2021 by 10,838,831 from 219 to 20, but the graph for 2021 indicated an increase of 1,229,000 from 219 to 20. Am I correct in saying that?
I'm sorry, in the special levy?
No. The audit draft shows a decrease of 2021 by 10,838,831 dollars from 219 to 20. But our graph for 20 and 21 indicated an increase of 1,229,000 from 219 to 20. Am I right in saying that? And if I'm not saying that correct, I am going to defer to Mr. Jamal, if you don't mind, so if Mr. Jamal can come on. Mr. Jamal?
Sure, yes, I am, I am on. Just, you know, to elaborate a little bit, since I was the budget and grant compliance director in the past when this happened, that's why, you know, a few council members, you know, consulted me on this with the approval of the mayor and it's just the open record. You know, in regard to the $2 million, you know, Martin was correct, we actually, the total fund balance reduced from 10,593,706 last year according to, according to the statement, the balance, the balance sheet that you provided, Martin, last year to 9,247,007. So there was a reduction in the total balance of about 1.3 million dollars that the city spent because we had to cover, you know, what's being deferred from the social security last year. So there's nothing, nothing we could have done under Mayor Bazey to avoid that because those payments need to be paid. That's why, as you said, we overspent our revenue by 1.3 million dollars. So the, part of this $2 million, you know, the council approved to convert from being assigned to unassigned that was necessary and that was actually with your advice, so we can cover our shortfall of the revenue of last year, you know, versus expenditures. And the mayor is aware of that and with the approval of the mayor, we paid, you know, we paid the deferred social security, you know, amount that had been deferred by late mayor Clacko last year. Now regarding the water fund, which is, you know, he referring to, I mean, the council referring to is that, and the, first of all, in the bond language, you know, which is being actually published on the state treasury, which is 172 pages, it stated in the resolution of the council that the bond debt payment should be collected by the general fund budget and or taxation. It did not refer to anything about the water fund. Those are public information, they are from the state treasury, you know, website. And I can read it to you exactly what it says there. It refers to, I'm referring to page three of the bond language, it says limited tax pledge. It says, it says, you know, if necessary tax, there be open tax for property, it says, you know, bond and shall advance as a first budget obligation from its general fund available, you know, therefore, or if necessary, levy taxes. It did not refer to anything regarding, you know, what you stated in your management discussion that this is, should be paid or being paid from the Water and Sewer Fund. Number two, on the participant information, which, you know, it's page three of the document is stated, primary security pledge, limited taxes. It says on the secondary one, it says, you know, secondary security pledges, it says others, it says none. You know, it should have said, you know, to the bond holder, it should have said Water and Sewer Fund collection or method of collecting. Number two, source of repayment. It says taxes, it did not, under others, it says nothing. Those are documents, you know, we released to the bond holders and that's how we promised them. Now I understand that maybe, maybe accounting wise, that or maybe under GAAP, you consider, you know, the water fund as part of the. you know, the water fund as part of the, as part of the general, or the corporate fund, but not the general, the general fund. Maybe, you know, more than I do. I respect your knowledge. You are a partner with one of the best, most respected, you know, CPA firms, not only in America, in the world. So if you consider, you know, the Water and Sewer Fund as part of the general fund, fine, but we need to express that and somehow get the council, because the council approved that resolution, and it stated it's from the general fund, and it should be collected, you know, by taxes. It never mentioned, you know, a water fund...
Okay, Mr. Jamal, for the sake of the meeting, because we do have to finish in the next 10 minutes, if you don't mind.
Okay, so that's regarding what's...
So, Mr. Jamal, I do want to comment that the Water and Sewer Bonds that were issued, it's purely Water and Sewer Fund. It has nothing to do with the Corporate Fund. The Corporate Fund and property taxes that come into the water, to the Corporate Fund do not pay for the bonds. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Because I'd hate to have someone here that, you know, for some reason, that, you know, someone's thinking that the bonds are being paid for by property taxes, they're not. It's purely paid through the Water and Sewer Fund.
Okay.
And the Water and Sewer Fund, the way it's paying currently, it's through Water and Sewer rates.
Okay, Martin, if you don't mind, I'm going to have you guys continue with the presentation, just sort of, and then maybe keep the questions towards the end, because we are limited on time with the meeting starting at seven, next meeting starting at seven. So Molly, if you don't mind, if you could continue with the presentation, please.
Okay, so this is our last slide, and this covers the overall trend in Water and Sewer net position. As you can see here, for fiscal year 2021, unrestricted net position shows approximately $879,000.
So that is the presentation for the graphs. Nikki, you're going to cover the letters. I wasn't sure which one you were going to start with first.
I'll start with the 260 letter.
Okay. Can you tell, if you don't mind, Martin or Molly, can you let us know specifically which page you're going to, so that we could be on the same page? Because we don't have no video presentation here, so a lot of the council members won't be able to see what you're seeing on the computer. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So Nikki's going to cover the first of the two letters. This one is the, I believe you have, the name is post audit letter, and it starts with, the first page is addressed to the mayor and members of the city council, and it has three sections on the first page that describes what sections it's broken up to.
Yep, so this is the letter that closes the loop on our required communication that we have with council. We would, we would report this letter to you at the end of every audit each year. So there's three sections that I'm going to kind of walk through. So Martin, if you go to the next page, the first section, this includes what our required communications are, and so it kind of lays out again what our responsibility is under the standard, talks about significant audit items that happened this year. So the city did implement a new accounting standard, GASB 84, related to fiduciary activities, and the change you'll see is there is just, there's a new fund that's reported as a fiduciary fund in your financial statements related to taxes that you collect for other governments. If you go to the next page, Martin.
I have the...
We do want to point out, so I'm at the top of page three right now, we do want to point out that there are some numbers, including your financial statements, that are based on estimates. Those would include self-insurance liabilities, pension and post, and OPEB liabilities, your alternative investments, and then property tax refunds and chargeback liabilities. There were no difficulties that we encountered during the audit, no disagreements with management. There were a few journal entries, so I'm in the middle of the page, corrected and uncorrected in the statements. We'll go through this in a little more detail when we cover the other letter. There were a few entries, journal entries, that we did identify as part of our testing, and one journal entry that we identified, it's an estimated number to, that impacts dual water and sewer receivables. We determined it to be immaterial, as did the city, and so we passed on posting it in your financials at year-end.
Okay.
Can I add a little bit more color to that?
Molly and Martin?
Go ahead.
One quick second. So I just want to make sure, just so that council members are aware, and maybe even the audience, the paperwork you guys are showing on the slides here are different than what we have. We had a lot of the drafts, so you may want to maybe slow down till we make sure what you're referencing, Molly, we have, the council members have it up, so that they're looking at the same thing. Because what you're looking at here, I finally found it, our paperwork's totally different than that.
And I never received anything like that in my packet.
In the email, yeah.
Nothing at all, and when I picked up my packet, all I got, I didn't get any deficiencies or anything.
So for the council members, this is what says January 5 on top?
I believe this might have been sent separately.
In an email?
I didn't get it all, because all I got is an independent auditor's report, that's all I received. I printed that today.
So these documents that we're showing you right now, these documents that we're showing you right now, they're finalized versions, so the ones that you would have received, and a lot of the documents I was providing in the council packets, I know that it's online as well, the links, that those would have been draft forms.
Right, we have, so all we have, Martin, is the draft. You guys have the finalized version, the non-draft version.
Let me do this, let me open up the draft form, so that we will mirror exactly what you have.
That's better, better format. Unless there was changes, I'm not sure if those changes were not, from the draft to the final. Because what the council members are looking at, they're looking at the initial portion, not what you're looking at.
Not even now. This was emailed...
Right.
Yeah, I think the only...
It's a little different, but it's just the formatting, everything else is the same.
Okay.
Yeah, and we just, there are no page numbers on this, because they weren't finalized. So at the bottom of this portion, oh, is where we talk about journal entries that we identified and journal entries that we passed on. And then, Martin, did you want to add a little more on the...
Yeah, so the only thing I wanted to add on, the $95,000 test entry, so a lot of times, you know, individuals would be concerned, like, why was something not posted? The entry results from the way we test the receivables, and part of our testing becomes analytical. So based on analytics, based on comparison to prior year receivables, it looked like your receivable balance could potentially be misstated by $95,000 in the Water and Sewer Fund. However, there's, it's just based on the analytics, there's nothing to say that based on our other testing that we had, that there's actually anything wrong, so we just had to alert you to the fact that it's this judgmental projected potential error, but based on discussions with the city and based on activity after year-end, this number is going to wash out essentially over next year's activity as you're collecting those receivables. So I don't actually particularly believe that it's an error, it's just based on how our testing was done, it needs to be coded to you or classified to you that there was a discrepancy, but honestly, I don't believe it's anything that's of any significance.
Okay, Martin, just for the sake, and I don't know if the council members agree or not, but I think just for the sake of time, because we only have a few more minutes before the next meeting, the main meeting starts now, and it has to start on time. I'm wondering if you could give us a synopsis of your recommendations at this particular point, what changes the city needs to make in order to make most of the corrections on this audit, or the important corrections on this audit, if you don't mind.
That's very fair. So Nikki, if you can go over real quick...
The recommendations, in other words, the recommendations.
My part, those are the improvements, and then also the internal control letter, because the internal control letter will have the biggest of the items for improvements.
Yep, so we have recommendations in both letters. The recommendations that Martin has up on the screen don't rise to the level of required to be reported to council as a material weakness or a significant deficiency, they're just areas that we came upon during our testing. And so the first one is related to certain balance sheet accounts that have remained the same for many years. They're small numbers, so they're not in stating your financial statements in any way, but they have had the same balance for a number of years. So we recommend that the city just look into those and adjust them where necessary. The second recommendation in the middle of this page is related to your fund balance policy that Molly had mentioned. So it's our understanding that the city has set a minimum fund balance threshold for the Corporate Fund to be the greater of an average of two months of expenses or 16% of your fiscal year-end expenses. However, as part of the audit, the results of the Corporate Fund falls a little short of this fund balance policy that you put into place. And so the actual amount of your unassigned fund balance is 12.5% of your total 2021 expenses. So we would just recommend here that if you're going to keep this policy in place, that you continue to monitor it where appropriate. And then the last recommendation we have here is related to general ledger access, so access to the financial system. We noted that there were certain employees who are no longer with the city, who are still listed as a user in the system, and so our recommendation is that if something, if someone has been, has left the city, they're no longer employed, that their username and their access should be, should be removed completely.
Martin, if you don't mind, Martin or Molly, if you don't mind, just for the sake of the residents, if you could just give maybe a sentence or two description as far as what your responsibility is, as far as auditor, and in the purpose, we have someone like you, not necessarily in the city, but overlooks all the numbers for the city, maybe a couple of sentences, please? As far as your responsibility?
I would say very high level responsibility is one, to test the numbers, to make sure that you can rely on the numbers that are presented to you. And two is to identify any issues that you may have. It's not our, I guess, our job description is not to fix those issues, but we want to make sure we alert you to them, so that we can figure out a game plan to fix those issues that we may have discovered.
And you are an independent body, just disclose it to the audience.
We are completely independent, we don't make any management decisions, we're a complete third party that comes in...
Or financial team.
Information that are, is available from the general ledger and other supporting documents.
Okay.
But overall, I would say, the biggest issues that we had during the audit, and I mentioned earlier, the opinion is, the opinion is one thing in the financial statement, so it doesn't say that there's no findings or any issues or anything like that. But the biggest issues that we found as a result of the audit are these findings that are on the screen right now in the internal control letter that Nikki's going to cover. And those, some of them are going to be very similar to years past, but essentially, what it comes down to, in a very short summary form, is that the information that you receive, the financial data that you have, there was a huge delay in getting everything done in accordance with GAAP. So we had to, we found entries that during the audit, so had to post entries in order to make your financial statements accurate. There are some allocations and different things that potentially should be revisited in order to make sure that you're allocating expenses between funds correctly. So everything's spelled out in this letter, and the findings are not very different from years past. And I would say, in general, we did have less entries, but a lot of the entries that the city was posting to make sure the records are accurate, those were done in September and October timeframe after year-end.
Okay.
Ideally, you would get all that done way sooner, you would get all your bank reconciliations done very timely. So that was another issue that we noted, is that bank reconciliations throughout the year were not necessarily done timely or reviewed time. Some of them were done about three months, I believe, after year-end, or after month end versus 30 days. Usually, the best practice is about 30 days of month end to get it.
You mentioned the paperwork was 30 to 45 days, and I know the treasurer's working on something for that. Was there anything else that's part of your presentation, or Molly?
So I didn't want to steal anyone's thunder, but I think Molly and Nikki, I think those were the biggest points, and I would definitely encourage the council and the city to focus on the internal control letter. Everything's in detail, and it also does have a response from the city talking about how the city is expecting to correct those issues. And I do believe that, based on discussions I had with management, based on discussions that I had with the mayor over the last few weeks, I do feel that the city has a good game plan in place that will help fix a lot of these issues that we identified, and I believe that a lot of those items are being discussed or will be discussed with the council in the coming weeks. So I do feel good about the plan, but I realize that a lot of it's evolving right now.
I do have a concern that a lot of the items, just like you mentioned, have been, you know, come up year after year after year. But I did talk with the mayor about this, and without getting into the details, the mayor's got a plan that's going to help us eliminate a lot of these factors that keep coming up in the audit. It's a pretty good plan, I mean, it'll be announced later, at a later date, but it is a pretty good plan. Mayor, you want to at least just give a general idea, if you don't mind, to the audience as far as what your plan is?
Thank you, I've addressed you as council chair pro tem still, but thanks for that question. So I know we had a discussion earlier, and a few of you called me as well. Well, first, I want to thank Plan Moran, Plan Moran has been very patient with us, you know, as Martin mentioned, you know, when they came in, we were several months behind, actually, there was some stuff that wasn't done since last June. And so we brought in, somebody contracted somebody to come in, and a lot of experience in auditing and also city financials. He's been more than just amazing, he's been finding things that, stuff that most of us would probably brought up, you know, in the last, like, three years, even when I was on council. And as you mentioned, we went back, we looked at the last 10 years, and I agree with you as an auditor myself, I hate repeat findings. So we do have a plan, you know, we are working with Plan Moran, and we're going to share that with the council, you know, once we finalize it, and we will be, we got to work ahead, instead of being reactive, we got to be proactive with everything that we're doing right now, so.
I do have a general idea on the plan, and I can tell you guys, it's very aggressive, but very effective, so I commend the mayor on that plan. Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
Martin, would you be opposed to coming in and sitting with us and going over this document face-to-face at a study session? I'm still very uneasy and have a lot more questions, and like I said before, you know, I picked this packet up on Thursday, I glanced through it Friday, plus all the other packet that I had for the regular city council meeting, and I, you know, I don't believe anybody here on this council is a CPA, and I just don't see how anyone could go through this entire document and fully understand it. And there's got to be more questions, and I think an hour is not nearly enough for any of us. So I'm hoping that we could set something up in the next few days, or maybe by next Tuesday, that we could come in and sit down and talk about this document, if you're not opposed to it, please.
So councilman, just a little bit...
I agree with Councilman Muscat completely.
Yeah, so I had a conversation with Martin, and I, like yourself, found that there's a lot of information here. I mean, we had, well, just one particular packet had 84 pages on it, and then there was multiple other, obviously, packets. So there's a total here of, I think, 120 or whatever pages, so I totally understand and respect where you come from. My plan was, during the city council meeting, regular council meeting, when we were going to be voting on this, was to table it.
And I wanted to ask Martin if he would come in...
Yeah, but when I checked, but even if at the very minimal, where we could look it over and make calls, but when I checked with Martin, he did mention me, I checked with him, I said, what is the latest that we could have to be able to come up with a vote on this? And per the state, the maximum you said was, was it a month or the end of the month?
End of this month. So the city has received an extension to file the financial statements, and it has to be filed by the end of this month.
Right.
So we have a study session next Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Martin, can you repeat that, please?
The city council has approved the statements by the end of this month, and I believe the last meeting is on the 25th.
But we could have a study session before that, and we can start it before 6 o'clock or 5 o'clock, if everybody read, and give us some time to ask some questions, and have us do some more research on this, because a lot of the notes that I wrote were kind of vague, too, but, and then I'm all over the place from water to everything here, and I'd like to put everything in order, so I didn't have a lot of time, so if you're not opposed to that, when we go through and vote, we may ask for you to come back, hopefully you'll agree.
So I'm happy to do so, so I'm happy to meet with the council at any time, so whether it's the whole council, or if you wanted to meet one-on-one, I'm happy to do so as well.
Well, I think it's easier when we're all together.
I like it to be on the record.
That's completely fine, and I do want to point out, so I... Yes, completely fine. And I do want to point out, so I will be at the study session on the 25th already for the water and sewer. However, I realize that there may be a lot of questions on this. So I would propose, like I say, I believe the study session for water and sewer is starting at 6:00. I'm happy to come in at 5:00 or even earlier, if that helps.
Thank you.
So that we can start early, and we can address all the questions you may have.
Yeah, we'll touch, we'll touch base with you on that, Councilman Hassan Ahmed.
I'm sorry, is it possible to have a study session before the next meeting?
Yeah. So the next meeting, we will not be voting either way. It'd be the week after that that we have. So it's just on the second and, and fourth Tuesday of the month. So yeah, we can.
So we have two study sessions by now?
We normally have a meeting.
Yeah.
We can have two study sessions.
Yeah, I definitely think, and also in addition to that, Martin, we have obviously some newer council members, and even the veteran council members. I mean, this is some very, very complex stuff. And I can tell you, three, four days is, is very difficult to be able to go through all this stuff and be able to digest it, and then be able to ask the right questions, not to mention presentation. So at this particular point, unfortunately, because of the minimal time that we have left, was there anybody else that had any question on the council?
Just briefly, Martin, so, and I think around February of this, what is now last year, we received a letter from the State of Michigan, Department of Treasury, about the delay in the, getting the bank statements reconciled. Do you recall if that's correct?
That was correct. So that, that was last year, and it's based on the findings as a result of the audit. So you're likely going to receive the same letter this year from this audit, because the bank statements were not reconciled timely again this year.
And you said normally a good practice would be 30 days, and it's been about three months?
In some cases, we noticed 90 days, yes, since the month end, until they were reconciled or reviewed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, but Councilman, just to clarify, though, at the same time, keep in mind that these are recommendations that they make, and then the different department heads will start. I, I know we received something from the treasurer. We just received it just now, a little bit ago, so I may have a chance to read it. But I'm sure every treasurer, every department head, including the treasurer, will be putting into effect an action plan to be able to make these corrections, hopefully. Martin, Molly, first of all, thank you very much. Was there anything else over and above and beyond this? At this particular point, I know it's limited in time, there's not much, but just maybe final thoughts or final statement, if you don't mind?
No. So the final thoughts, so thank you for the opportunity of presenting. Of course, we're going to go in a little bit more detail next time around the study session, so we can answer more questions. I do want to say thank you to the city for all the hard work in getting us to this point. I know it's, it was a big lift, like I said at the very beginning, so it's very much appreciated, all the help. I would say that there's, there's so many people involved that I don't want to just single out a couple of individuals. So I just want to say thank you so much for all the effort. Given the pandemic and everything, I know that things were a little bit more problematic, too. We were there in person some of the days, some of the days we did remotely. So it was a hybrid approach this year, and it definitely, I feel like it definitely worked in a long run. So definitely thank you so much. And I'm happy to address any questions, like I said, either now in the next couple of minutes, or we can talk in more detail in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Martin. You've always been of great help. And, and I always value the way you explain things. You take something very complex and minimize it to, to the point where your average person, average stroke can understand it. So thank you. Molly, do you have any final statement, if you don't mind?
Uh, no, just thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for being here.
I'm working with all of you over these past few months.
At this particular point, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comments. Please state your name, the city you live in, the county. And I don't like, Madam Clerk, I don't like address, at least just street name. Yeah, just street name. Thank you. And if you don't mind, for those in the audience that do want to come up and do public comment, two minutes, please. If you have to, I'll give you a little bit more.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Treasurer.
Good evening. Lisa Hicks, Clayton on the treasurer. I live on Gully Road, here in Dearborn Heights. So I wanted to speak to the question on item number 2021-003 on your audit finding, was a bank reconciliation. So again, that is fiscal year 21. Being treasurer the last six months of that fiscal year is when we actually caught the bank statements up. In fact, because of the staffing, and, and I address that a little bit here, with longevity in that office, and days off and things like that, and we are working to cross-train and fix that. You know, we have an action plan in place, but literally, that person who does reconciliations was working multiple Fridays and overtime to get those bank statements up, caught up. And it really isn't that person's fault whatsoever. It's the way the workflow is scheduled in that department. So we actually did an organizational study on the treasurer's office, and looking at the workload, and say, how can we better redistribute this? Which is what we're actually starting to do now. We're redistributing the workload in that office, so that way you don't have one person, when they're out, it all weighs down, ends up on their desk looking like this, a big stack, okay? So we're fixing that and addressing that. We've already started that process. The other thing we did is we have online banking now, which we did not have before. So that means we have access immediately to look at, including our comptroller, I don't know if he's here, but he's online with us, but we added him as well. So there's online access for the comptroller and the treasurer's office, multiple people, not multiple, but approved, we have three approved, that can look at the online bank statements immediately. The last thing we did is we talked to Plant Moran, and I asked for help. I said, can you come in and do an assessment? Can you give me some feedback? Tell me how we can become more efficient at doing this? Because what we've been doing for many years, all due respect, doesn't work now. It doesn't. We know that. That's why we keep getting flagged on it. So we are working to resolve that, and that's in the memorandum that I shared with you. If you did not get a copy, please let me know. And my door is always open to you, so call me anytime or come by. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer. Any other public comments? I'm sorry? Somebody online? Yes. So go ahead, Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and start letting them on? I'm sorry, who was, what was the name? Okay, Mr. Jamal, go ahead. Two minutes, please.
Again, good afternoon. Just following up on, you know, what I started. Thank you for Plant Moran. We work together. Just for the public to understand and know what happened. The Mayor Bazey formed the financial team immediately after he become, you know, accustomed to his new appointment. That financial team faced difficulties because the city lost institutional knowledge with, with, you know, partially the deputy comptroller, you know, left. Before she left, she was off. So, and, and we didn't have no replacement. Number two, we were left, you know, the mayor was left in the comptroller office with a very, very, you know, behind record, you know, financially and accountably. So by the time the financial team was working together to, to actually overcome what's being left for the first six months of the year, here we are. We were late on the, on the other six months or four months. You know, most of the findings, you know, from April of 21, they will be corrected. Those findings, we cannot avoid. We know we are going to have them because of the previous, you know, whatever it is, you know, those reflect on the time before this financial team and the Mayor, Mayor Bazey administration took over. Internal control being established, and it's been in place. All the, you know, grant and the CFR 200, all, all the recruitment process are done correctly. And, and some of them were not done, we stopped them and corrected them. Such as, you know, the waterman, excuse me, you know, I am requesting a few, a few minutes more. This is very important for the public.
Okay, Hassan, but just for the, for the sake of starting the next meeting, I'm going to give you one more minute. Go ahead.
Okay. So, so such as the waterman line, we stopped it and we correct the process, you know, according to CFR 200. So I want the public to understand that under Mayor Bazey administration, those findings doesn't apply. Those are, we are forced to, to accommodate what's being left. So thank you for the financial team, thank you for the budget team, thank you for the city council who helped us and approved all these new languages, how we proceed with payment. So, and, and thank you, Plant Moran, for all what you did. I personally appreciate all your time you put in. We appreciate your assistance. We appreciate working with us through the state extension, and we are looking forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Hassan.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the Zoom meeting? Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Sheen, chief, please, the names.
Hello. Good evening.
Go ahead, Tim.
Have a hard time hearing city council members.
By the way, thank you, Tim. Let me just make a quick comment on that.
That's all I got.
Oh, that's it? Okay, thank you. So everybody's got to bring up the microphone as close as possible to your mouth. If you're a couple feet away, they won't be able to pick it up on a Zoom meetings. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
I, I can hear the people that are on Zoom, good, but the city council, even you, Dave, I got a hard time. You sound real muffled.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now? Is this clear?
It, it's, it sounds like you got to cut over the microphone, so.
Oh, okay.
You're real good.
Huh? Yeah, the microphone's on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, go ahead. Anybody else? That's it? Any other questions from the audience? All right. Thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute break and then start our regular city council meeting. Thank you.